Okay, so I called the meeting to order at 5:09 and then we'll start off with Helen and Marcy to talk about the liaison, the liaison to the school board, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I am going to kick off this conversation. And then Mrs. Hutchinson will join me in presenting some of our ideas for consideration by the governing board. Cody, do you want to give me control of the screen so you can continue to work on the technical issue? I think it would be best if I do share content, so. Give me that, so I can, I can share my screen with everyone. Thank you. Can, can you just confirm that you're seeing student liaisons to the governing board presentation? Excellent, excellent. So thank you for giving us the time this evening to talk a little bit more about the student liaison program. We had the opportunity to talk to you at the May 18 meeting, I think it was, and share some of our thoughts around how to enhance the program. And you asked us to come back to you during the study session so that we would be able to dive, delve a little deeper into, into what the ideas might be and put a design going forward. So what we would share with you tonight is just, as Mrs. Hutchinson and I spoke about this, we decided, you know, let's make sure we're true to the roots of the program. So when I looked at Policy BCI, which is the policy on student liaison program, this sentence, which you crafted as part of the program, really struck me. The ideas, opinions, and concerns of students are important to the governing board. So this has really been the guiding phrase, the guiding idea that we've used as, as we've designed what we're, what we're sharing with you this evening. And then the second, we wanted to remind you why we, why we brought this to you in May about the idea of enhancing the program. And one was to take that sentence about, you know, the ideas, opinions, and concerns of students being important, and expand upon that to being the idea that if we could advance the role of the student liaisons to truly be a voice that informs the governing board on establishing conditions of success. One of the important aspects of the student liaison program is that the outcome of the program is that you will be able to use the ideas, the informations, the collaborations, the communications in the policy work that the governing board does. There's many other levels in the organization that listen to student voice and strive to hear student voice, but this is true at the policy level, which is so important. And then again, I'd remind you of the statement that spoke to Mrs. Hutchinson while we were reviewing the data and the responses from the survey for the superintendent search. And this was a statement from one of the students who responded, that students know the challenges at school better than anyone, but are rarely asked for their input on solving the problems that face them personally. They want a district that respectfully listens to us, we are intelligent, and we have viable solutions. And when you, when you juxtapose the idea that the board has of student idea and voice being important, and students wanting a district that respectfully listens to them, it's the perfect combination for designing a student liaison program that will allow that to happen sustainably over the course of time. We have other channels that we have used outside of the student liaison program. For example, there was a time certainly during Dr. Cowan's tenure where the superintendent, and I believe into future superintendent's tenures, that the student council leadership teams would come in and have a quarterly luncheon with the superintendent. And the voice of student council would be heard, the role of how student council operated on a high school campus, and what the purpose of student council is, was certainly discussed. But that was one, one voice, one type of voice that is available to us from our students. And then we also at times went out and had superintendent roundtables at our high schools. Again, an opportunity to bring in small groups of students to talk to the superintendent about a particular topic or topics that were important to the superintendent at the time to help in his decision-making of the work that was being done in the district. But these were very infrequent and not sustainable. The voice was different every time, and we, we didn't really take and consolidate that information in a way that could be brought forward to the governing board and inform your decision-making. At the same time, we know that students want their voices to be heard, and we know that they want to share their voice. Some of the examples I have here is last May, during the very last week of school, which was a very traditional ending of school for us, we asked very spontaneously some student voice around the strategic plan. And one of the questions we asked was an open-ended question of, "My school would be better if." And we got incredible feedback. Mrs. Minor, you probably remember that, and I think Mrs. Hutchinson, you were there, as the steering committee dove into those comments way more than anything else that we had gathered from the community because that student voice was so authentic to us. And then during the master planning process, Mrs. Williams has had the opportunity to work with students in designing what their schools should look like. And I'd love to toss it to Mrs. Williams just for a moment to talk about how important that student engagement has been to her work.
Thank you, Helen. We did have quite, quite a bit of success both at Mountain View and Mesa High, and I'll speak a little bit about Lehigh in including student voice in the planning. We, we did some dream sessions with them about what they'd want for their schools, and they helped us prioritize projects and even designed what they'd like to see on their campuses through some interactive crafting, for lack of a better word. We also engaged the littlest students at Lehigh. Each classroom designed their dream, dream classroom with, using it kind of a diorama kind of thing. And then the students presented those ideas to their parents and teachers during parent-teacher conference week in January. So some very exciting opportunities and students, you know, what we learned is vital to the planning that we're doing with our architects as they talk about what students want on campus. While, while we can't have a retractable roof on the school like it's like, we can know that sunlight is important to them and windows. And so how do we take their vision and make it something that's practical? So really good, really good experience and something that we plan to replicate as we move forward in the master plan.
Thank you. I think that's, we have that experience of them. And I think Holly mentioned to me how dedicated they have been in continuing with that work, that they want to continue to be involved. So I think that's important. And then most recently, just several weeks ago, again, during the very last week of school, a very non-traditional ending of school, we sent out a survey to our students to ask them not only to reflect on how the end of the school year ended, but how they liked and their thoughts about the beginning of the school year. And this was to our seventh and 12th grade students. And as you can see, nearly 6,000 responses from those students wanting to make sure that, that we heard their voice. So, so we know, I believe this data and these experiences clearly indicate that student voice is important, is as important to them as it is to us. And now the question becomes, how do we design and frame a program that will deliver on that? So I'm gonna, Mrs. Hutchinson, I will continue to drive, but if you would like to take over, I will.
Oh, thanks much, Mrs. Hollins. You know, and when we asked the question, "How can we frame a program?" It became, when, when Mrs. Hollins and I were, were thinking out loud, it became very evident that one of the reasons why our programming in the past had not been sustainable was that we needed to start looking at this program through the eyes of the students. The student voice was missing, and the "we" has to be a "we" of the district and the students. We've got to have a perspective of students, and what we're going to try to look at is a co-construct. A program that isn't imposed, where we expect students to assimilate to what we think they want, but actually listening to students and letting the ideas percolate up. In essence, what we started looking at was our own portrait of a graduate. And we said, "Why don't we, as a district, as a board, start modeling that portrait of a graduate?" And so we believe that we can model the essential attitudes and the essential skills of the portrait of a graduate by co-constructing the program through collaboration with our students. As, as, as my fellow board members know, the portrait of a graduate is taking us in a very positive, but a different direction. And we are basically reimagining Mesa Public Schools. And, and the time is right to start asking students to help us develop a program where their voice will be heard. So a co-construct is where we want to have, using the essential attitudes and the essential skills of our portrait of a graduate. And so students are going to be asked to create a student-centered program of civic engagement at their high school. And that, and I must admit, it's, it's kind of a loaded statement. We are asking students to help us create this student-centered program because really, the portrait of a graduate is a student-centered vision for the district. And as my colleagues know on the board, civic engagement is one of the real points of pride in the Mesa Public Schools. I've actually been able to attend the Arizona Department of Education Civic Engagement Awards. And our schools, MPS schools, win the most awards of any school district in the state. We have civic engagement programs in our schools, and the portrait of a graduate combined with this sense of importance of civic engagement, I think this would be the perfect foundation on which to build our student liaison program. Because asking students to do is to become engaged. They want to be engaged. We've seen that through their reaction to our surveys and whenever we've asked them for our help. But civic engagement has to be taught. You have to be carefully taught. And if we were to teach our students not just about civics, but actually have them do civics, we are going to advance our portrait of a graduate by making sure that our graduates, by being involved in a purposeful program, are inclusive. This program will be based, the core of it will be based in collaboration. These folks, these students are going to have to communicate not only amongst each other, but with their peers and with us and with the district. And, and by building the program, and by then effectively enacting the program, working with the program, we are teaching them to be contributors in our community. We are the public servants, and the students are our public, and we serve them. And what we dared to do, Ms. Hollins and I, was, was try to figure out, okay, what steps now? So Ms. Hans, would you, would you go to the first step, please? The first thing we need to do is to listen. As a board, as a district, we need to listen to our students, listen to their ideas, listen to their concerns. So we are suggesting, again, this is up for discussion amongst my colleagues for sure, but this is a suggestion that we do a listening tour this fall semester. And not a tour, a listening tour where, where we react and we defend, but really truly listen and experience the student voice and their concerns and their ideas. We suggest that we visit all the schools serving students grades nine through 12. This would not just be our traditional schools, but our special schools as well. Any student in grades nine through 12 attending a secondary school in the Mesa District would be included. We would like to ensure the representation from the entire student body. Representation, which is not just from leadership, but also from students who have interests in a wide variety of places on their campuses and who are truly interested in representing the entire student body. We, we want this to be an inclusive listening tour. Now, one of the, one of the most important aspects of the listening tour is that we gain understanding. Because as public servants, the better information we have, the better programming, the better policies we can develop. And so in order to encourage representation from the entire student body and for students to be able to talk freely about their ideas and concerns, we thought it would be a novel idea to engage a young adult facilitator. Not necessarily a principal, not necessarily one of our, of our own district people or even ourselves, but a young adult who has engaged in this type of work, who knows our community and who knows our kids, and whom we believe that the kids would trust. And so the person that we automatically thought of, pop-up, was Jordan Harb, who is a graduate of Mountain View High School. And Mountain View High School graduate, Jordan Harb, has, is known to our board, is known to students, and after having graduated, he has now become a part of a group called Student Voice. And they actually have a curriculum on how to do a listening tour in our schools. So they would help us select the students with, of course, the, the input of principals and counselors and teachers, folks that students trust and who are engaged with our students. But Jordan would be our, our facilitator because he knows Mesa and he knows the ideas and concerns, and we best think that he can facilitate honest, open discussion. Step two would then take us to nurturing the relationships that students have. Can we, can we have, there we go, thank you. And what we, what we're thinking of is that with the help of student voice, which would be Jordan and perhaps some other student facilitators who are college, either students or graduates, but also the principal, also the teachers, also the counselors, that they would engage in a learning process. They would continue to communicate on their campus, but then we would provide opportunities where they would creatively think and innovate with inspiring new ideas, building upon existing ones, and start developing a program on their campus. A chance for organic growth. In other words, each campus, each student body, each adult community in that campus would help to foster communications, to think and innovate, inspire new ideas, and perhaps build upon the mighty traditions that each of our campuses have. In other words, this is not going to be a cookie cutter approach. We are going to perhaps have different types of, shall we say, programming at each campus. Or we might have the same, but we're going to let the students drive this and help to inform us of what is, they believe is the best way to communicate with us. And then step three would be the co-construct, where the district, the students, their campuses, and the board would try to now start developing the framework. We, we are, we want to engage in authentic, two-way communication with our kids. To do that, we need to give them the freedom to express their concerns and ideas in a safe setting on their campuses. The liaisons to the governing board will then provide us the information. And at the same time, that program, the four pillars, if you will, to this program would be civic engagement, actual practice of what it means to be a citizen and engage in active problem-solving, solution-creating, better practices for our campuses and our district. The collaboration is key to the portrait of a graduate. We have to listen and learn from each other and work with each other. Communication, always to make sure that we are communicating with each other and getting the best information. But this has to be a 9-12 program. We just can't have seniors taking on the leadership because we want this program to keep going and to sustain year after year so that it becomes as natural a part of high school as homecoming or prom or football games. So this is the method to our madness, if you will, of, of one Ms. Helen Hollins and myself. But we, we thought we'd just throw out some ideas and then hear from you on what you think about these ideas, and let's start the discussion. I, I really look forward to hearing your ideas and based on your experience on the board and how you would like this to go further into the future, thinking about portrait of a graduate, thinking about the incredible opportunities, even in a pandemic that we have, to engage our students in civic responsibility.
Are you wanting us to end now? Is this, is this the question portion of the?
Certainly, it's question and discussion part. You got it, Ms. Ms. Richardson.
Okay, so I have a bunch of questions and things I've written down as I, thoughts that came to my mind. First of them is a couple of, time has gone into this strange morph. I don't know if it was like a month ago or two months ago, six weeks ago, I'm not sure. But I, I participated in a participatory budgeting framework that some of our schools have been doing. And I think all of Chandler's doing it, several districts around. Currently in Mesa Public Schools, we only have, I think, I know Carson Junior High is doing it. I don't know if any others do it. And it's the same kind of, it's a, it's a smaller framework, of course, but it's a budget. They get a percentage of their budget. Sometimes it's been money the principal has set aside. Sometimes it's been through, available through a grant. Some of them took a portion of their bond money and had the students decide what needed to happen. But it was this participatory budgeting framework. And there's students from ASU, there's some that have been working with the district in other capacities. But they are, and so it has this kind of element of how do we engage the student voice and how we're spending some of the money on their campuses. And it's got some very similar sounding things to what you are talking about. I guess my concern is certainly your proposal has a lot of great possibilities to it, but it sounds really large scale. And so are you hoping, like, to me, to me, I would rather, are you hoping this morphs into a club at individual schools? And then there's a, and so you're kind of wanting that, it to happen that way? And we lay some ground rules? Is that what you're envisioning? Are you envisioning, you know, I still think that this is the point of student government. Student government at their high schools should be holding town halls and hearing what's important to the students. And then we have a liaison that comes to report. Are we asking specific questions? When you talk about a listening tour, are all five of us going to these high schools so that we can hear and listen? Well, who's listening then? You know what I mean?
Yes.
So if the goal is that we're doing it, are we just getting a report on what people said? You know, all of those things. And so I want to know, I, I love the idea. I believe that we need to hear student voice and we need to have them, and, and it needs to be a little bit of an outreach. They need to understand what we do and what the role of a governing board is. And it needs to be, and that we need to hear what's important to them on their campuses. But I don't necess, you know, you, you mentioned that civic engagement is very important, and we have award-winning schools. What are they already doing and how do we tap into what they're already doing? Rather than create something from the ground up would be my, at first blush, my opinion on this, you know?
Yeah, I think, Jenny, I think in, in response, it, it, the listening, the listening tour, I think that's where we get the feel, and I, and I don't believe that it would be a good thing for us to be there necessarily. I think we could, we could film it or tape it. But we want, we want kids to feel like they don't have to say really all the good things, that they can actually talk open and honestly. And because, and because frankly, they may tell us some things that are going to be very uncomfortable for us to hear, but important things for us to hear. And, 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 and I think at this time, particularly, kids have a lot of things to say to us. And, and so I think listening is, is going to be an important factor. How the listening will take place, student voice does have some, some curriculum. So we could, we, if you were interested in that, we could, we could maybe go down that, that path. But I think it's going to be dependent, I see it almost dependent on the culture of the school. The, the, you know, like, there are some schools that have a very strong student government that is broadly based. And there are some schools where it's a popularity contest to get on student government. You know, I think that, that in, in some schools, like Westwood, you know, where you've got Rachel Colay's Environmental Club, those are the kids that are interested in, in issues and, and, and are used to diving into problems and. and, and, and are used to diving into problems and being, coming aware and letting their peers know what those problems are and suggesting solutions and coming up with school-wide programs. Those types of students are probably the types of students that we would want to hear from. They're heavily invested in their schools, but they've got, they've got certain things that they think we ought to address more, you know? And that might, and I think it, you know, you might, you could get different elements. And I think that there are teachers on campus that know who those kids are, that are maybe not very, they're not vocal, but they have ideas. There are principals who know who those kids are. There are, there are programs on, different schools have different strengths. And it may be at some schools, you would, they would feel very comfortable about having a student liaison leader on student government who would then get better representation from the student body to us. But they've got to be taught how to do that, you know? I'm thinking this could be a lot of different models at a lot of different schools based on what the kids come up with. What, how do they want to talk to us rather than us telling them how to talk to us?
My thoughts and reaction. Appreciate you bringing this up and the enthusiasm for it. What I'm hearing is, Marcy, is something that's much bigger than just input to the board. My guess is more than, you know, the vast majority of the suggestions and ideas that would be coming out of this group would not be a board issue. It would be, it would be an Andy issue, an issue for the superintendency. It's an operational, it's a building structure, it's a furniture issue, it's a whatever else. And a small offshoot of what would be coming out then would be more, you know, policy, high-level budget, or evaluating the superintendent. But what I also hear is that if we go down this path, then we need to put enough resources behind it before the kids know that we're seriously listening at whatever format that you choose to do it in. And so if it's just one or two of us to go down and listen, you know, well, they're not really interested. I mean, it, but to me, it sounded like it would end up being predominantly something Andy would oversee as a superintendent with a piece of that saying, hey, that's a governing board issue that needs to be spun off to listening, you know, to, then to listen to. Because most of what the kids, in my opinion, are going to have input on are going to be more operational, more things that Andy would oversee. Those are my, those are my reactions.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly think that, that's why I kept saying the district as well as the board, but, but, but we're the democratically elected representatives of our community that oversee the district. And we want this to be an exercise truly in participatory democracy. And, and how do you listen to your fellow citizens? How do you gather information? How do you formulate solutions? And yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Stephen, that a lot of the things that, that students might be, be approaching us with are issues that perhaps Dr. Forless would be dealing with. However, I can't keep forgetting the, the organization of students that came to us and asked us for a resolution on mental health and in support of mental health services for our students. And then they were able to take that and then take it to another level because they knew that we couldn't just fund that, that that was a state funding issue. And then they organized press conferences and they, they actually made appointments with their state legislators. They had a state legislative day and they, and they worked within the system to try to influence a bill becoming a law. And they saw progression. I really see this as, as not just contributing ideas, but also a sense of advocacy and what it's like to be able to influence policymakers. So I think, I think it's, it's dual-purposed, and I, and I like how you frame that, Mr. Peterson, because I really think that, that that is something that we could work towards is not only just influencing us, but then the district as well.
The thing that we have to be very careful of is that we don't give them the impression that we have the authority to solve something.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Because then we, then we become the disappointment. We have really very little that we actually solve as elected officials other than the policy, the budget, and then hiring a wonderful superintendent. You know, that's kind of the scope of our elected roles and then to listen and to give guidance. And so certainly getting their input and their guidance is critical, but being very careful that we don't pull ourselves into where that we're now, they expect us to actually execute. Because then that, that causes lots of problems.
And, and I think that goes, that's where the education part comes in, where they, they are educated like we did with our student liaisons as to what, what powers we really do have, what our role is, and, and, and what our responsibilities are. But, you know, when you talk about budget, our values as a district should be in the budget. And students as stakeholders, they're, they ought to be able to influence the budgeting process just like citizens are. Because frankly, many of these, these students are going to be of voting age or very close to it, and this is just really good democratic processes and practices. And what better way to model contributing to your community than, than actually engaging in influencing or creatively helping an elected board come to a decision? But I understand your, your concern because frankly, we get frustrated that we can't do what we, what we, what we wish we could do. And, and so I think that's part of the education process as to what we, we actually have as powers as a governing board, but then how this works in the process.
Stephen, I appreciate what you're saying as well because I'm having a hard time distinguishing when I hear this, I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain about, around the whole concept. There, am I echoing? I hope I'm not. I feel like I'm echoing or maybe I'm talking too loud. I, I feel like there's a lot to this and there's some open-ended questions that I certainly want answered. And speaking of open-ended, when we have asked for student input in the past, we've had a theme or we've had a purpose we're drawing their opinions or feedback on. The strategic plan, of course, is one of the best examples of that. The club, the schools, going back to schools and asking our very own students, including them, and that there was a theme. And so their input was given back to the appropriate individuals in the district who do the management and have the ability to do the logistics of the, or processes of whatever that entails, whether it's, excuse me, the strategic plan or it's the opening of schools, that is up to our administration. But, and I forgot where I was going with that, but anyway. So with this, my fear, my concern is that it doesn't have enough for me to understand where this could go as far as kind of letting loose on different ideas. I don't know what, what we're agreeing to yet. I'm not sure, I'm not comfortable without having some themes that we'd be following. Jenny, you alluded to that there were other school districts working on the budget. I like that idea. I like the ideas of having our students involved and having a process. I like the idea of them learning how to be advocates, how they're, they can learn what their civic responsibilities are as well as the way to approach it. I really like all of that. What I'm struggling with is how this becomes a part of the board. And going back to what Stephen said is we aren't involved with so much of that. Our administration is involved with it. Our teachers are involved with it. The organizations that they could create on their campuses that could really facilitate some great programs like you described, that to me is a very exciting opportunity. What I struggle with is how it comes back to the board and how we convey that we have specific responsibilities on the board that are rather narrow in scope compared to what students can be responding to, that the administration would be more concerned about in facilitating. I hope that makes sense. I was trying to articulate the many feelings and process what I was feeling as you were walking through it. And I think the bottom line is I've always had a very strong line of what is our administration's responsibility and what is the board? And I am concerned unless we get more specifics on this that will help me feel better about it, that we are confusing the two, we are bringing them too much together because there's so much to do. I don't know if the administration is on, at the high school level, they'd certainly have to have people involved in this to facilitate it, whether that's something they would like to take on, that of course is for the administration to decide. But, and I want a form of liaison to the board, but I don't want to be too lengthy on this. I'm just saying that's where my concern is, is if we had a theme and we had a directive of what we were looking for, for feedback with students, I know that sounds limiting, but we are limited as to what we are looking at as well. We don't look at the way the school districts is administrate, is being administered, only our superintendent and the job she's doing. So in likeness, the students need to be dealing with more of, the people that have the ability to change much of what they probably, I would think, be more interested and concerned about, as Stephen said. I hope that's clear. I apologize if it's not. I'm having a hard time articulating that.
I would like to, yes, understand what you're saying, President Minor. I think there's a way to bring the two together. As I was listening to what's before us as well as kind of the research and starting it and putting all these things together, I think there's a comfortable medium where the, where the concerns and the so-called limitations come together. It's when we look at policy. One of the biggest umbrellas that we started talking about when we first talked as, looked at a student liaison was helping to inform policy. A policy lens is what we use to address a lot of those things. If something is operational, then we talk to our superintendent because we know our superintendent is responsible for the operations, but we as board members can talk to the superintendent. So I think an easy way to actually discuss this is you start with the students again, re, having that lesson again, in which what we work under, talking about the major themes that we are responsible for as board members, including budget, the hiring of the superintendent, and approving those things that are budgetary related and policy. So outlining that and actually a lens of, in this particular situation, students want to change something or have an idea of something, the first question is, what's our policy behind that? Is it B to A so-and-so and so? This then becomes, as you heard that part, that's kind of the interacting of how we get there. I think that helps. So it's when you, because when you think about what students want to do, what they may be concerned about, our students are very sophisticated nowadays. They're looking at all the things that affect schools and what they're living in and with the new, new school, just like we're looking at innovative ways to bring teaching, different ways, there's a partnership with ASU and how all of those different things. I think if what we, how we exist as a board is a particular framework that has been historically what it is. So I think we, innovation says, we work with this type of project, we make it, kind of streamline it with, these are things that should be addressed with the superintendent in terms of their totally operational things. These are things that maybe we need to look at our policy regarding these things. Because students will have operational things saying, you know, when it comes to school lunch, we think this should happen, this should be new. I mean, like I can think of many examples, like I think we should be doing this from an environmental lens. I think like how we have Grubhub, I would like to have that. And we have to talk about safety, the policy, why we don't have deliveries to the school, what's going on with all those different things. So I don't think it's as, it is as complicated as thinking, oh, we're just creating or duplicating an existing program that exists. I, bringing it to the board is actually doing that, having something where students look at policy and then they look at the leader of our school, the superintendent. And we ourselves go through the exercise on a regular basis. And so we're putting this student in the same kind of framework that we think about, is this operational, where we need to talk to our superintendent about this? Or do we have a policy or language around this as things change and evolve? So I think we actually start with the student with an education of this is how things exist and give a framework. And I believe this is, you know, kind of our overall idea of all things and saying that this is very, we want to be innovative with what we do in this, but most of all, make sure that the students have, the student voice can be heard and addressed. Like we know we can't be all things to all people. With our students, there is a framework, policy and operations. And we start with that and kind of take those buckets. And as we work with the student liaison, they get to see the challenges of being that leader. Because when you're a leader, there's always challenges with someone saying, hey, even a peer coming to you saying, hey, and the student now is our voice saying, no, this is what the school board does. This is how that goes. If we want this change, the school district doesn't even deal with this. We found out that that needs to happen at the state level. So I think it's not as complicated as thinking it's all these things and we're just opening up a whole can. It's actually putting a framework around helping students just like we help the community. Now we have a lot of adults in our community that are still learning actually what we do as board members, what's happening. I think this is an excellent opportunity to have a new generation start understanding and be a part of making this whole awareness and the consciousness of what we do as a school district. That's my feedback on what I heard and how I would look at framing it. So it's not just kind of a lot of suggestions look like coming at us that we can't do anything with. We actually ask the simple question as board members, is this policy? Is there a policy that probably addresses this? And we know it's operational. And again, the repeating and being redundant, I think that if we manage it that way, it makes it manageable to me. That's what we do.
So I'm keeping an eye on the time and knowing we're supposed to be done with this conversation in one minute. So I, for me, I guess I can, my takeaway from what you said, Kiana, is, and Stephen, I think that as presented, certainly we are not ready to move forward, but it's too broad is kind of what I hear several of us saying. But so maybe the idea is more that we start with something like we would like to use participatory budgeting at the school, at our, at our high schools where we have nine through 12 students, where they have some kind of budget that they are able to. And then we also maybe introduce a policy that they specifically seek feedback on that we can look at as a district, you know, or maybe three or four policies. And we, and we charge them with figuring out a way to do it. Is that, to me, that makes it more manageable? I don't know. It's, I, it sounds more like we're I don't know. It's I, it sounds more like we're developing a club and a curriculum. And that isn't the vision of what I thought a student liaison was. A stu-, uh, to me, in my perfect way, it would work where, you know, Mrs. Hutchinson suggested different clubs that have this greater people. And I think, well, I get that. I want to reach out to everybody. I would say that every organization on campus has, um, I know a lot of campuses have a sports leadership. So where they take somebody from every sport to be on a co-council. The bands and orchestras, the music, the, a lot of those clubs have a, a club organization, a president. Uh, and so within that framework, you can get a person from each of those and then you represent a wide variety of students and a wide variety of um, of, and and they all can ask their individual people how, you know, that we, I'm trying to think of a framework that exists without starting a whole new, because even when you say, well, there's this club that does this, I'm like, but that's a certain kind of person. This uh, kind of person who wants to be on the environmental club at Westwood High School is a certain type of person. It's not necessarily representative of the whole school. It's a certain type of person. And yes, they maybe really have great ideas and and but it's, so you've got to get all of those different clubs to come and talk together. And I think for me, I'd be more comfortable if it was about a specific, we want the input on a specific thing that is a board responsibility. Um, and I think that would help me narrow the focus because I do, I want to hear what the students have to say. I just don't know that starting, what are they already doing that's helping them win these civic engagement? I need to know more about that and I, it's my responsibility to go learn it, I guess.
Uh, I, Jenny, you said it better than I said it for sure. I, I think there were many words you used in there that I was thinking about curriculum. It it seems like there needs to be a curriculum for this, that there are already organizations that do some of this. But you also said, which I think we all agree with, is we like the idea of having the voices from our students advocate for things that we do have um, say on, on policies. When we are considering a policy, I do want the voices of the student. I don't think any of us disagree with that. I think where we are struggling is figuring out a way where we're going to um, to get that without invading into areas that there on our campuses that are already being done or creating a lot of work for our administration by recreating the will that in some respects is already being created on our campuses in other forms. So that's, that's kind of my feelings in a nutshell, that this is still a viable idea. We're not shutting it down by any means. We're working through the ideas that Marcy and Helen that you worked together on so that we can come up with what really would work for the board to bring those voices to them, and that's what we want to do. So this is just a study session and we need to just, it sounds like to me, we need to continue. And my question is, how can we do that? Um, clearly, Marcy, you are very, very um, experienced in this area as coming from your background, that you are very knowledgeable and know and have ideas in your head of what you would like to see. And you have ideas how to move forward. We are, we do not have that as board member, other board members. How do we get educated so that we can feel more comfortable with some of the ideas and put together something that is more specific to the board? And then the administration can deal with what they would like to do in their lane. And we can figure this out in another study session because I know you feel frustrated because you want this to move along. You don't want it to be stalled, and that's not the idea. We do want it. So how, Helen, would you have some ideas, or maybe Andy or Pete piping in on how we can put our arms around this? That's what I'm having a hard time doing. I feel like that was a lot of information and a lot of um, different ways of looking at it and different approaches that we can take. How do we bring this to a level that we can, we can have some finality to it?
This is Helen. Um, as I've listened to this, um, what I've been trying to to make note of is all the commonalities that I've been hearing. Uh, the commonalities of um, the intense interest to hear student voice. Um, the the commonalities of the clear demarcation between what the governing board is responsible for and what the administration is responsible for. Um, and the the sense of, and maybe a little bit of a um, a a collision there um, and concern that that collision will happen in the students' minds. Um, it reminded me of a conversation I had uh, just yesterday. Um, we were doing a program evaluation and our our ideas were so big on on this program evaluation that we couldn't figure out how to get it off of the ground until we said, well, let's start with what we know how to do. And once we accomplish that, maybe the path to the next level of that will be clearer. So I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, perhaps what we need to take back from this conversation is as the administration, how do we ensure as we implement the portrait of a graduate, as we reflect on the um, the activities in our nation over the past week or so? How do we ensure that as we design anything, we design in student voice? Whether it is ensuring that the master plan committee, which is already doing it well, is including student voice. But we look at those other opportunities and then our responsibility back to the governing board is to report out, how did we include student voice in this recommendation that we're making to you? Um, and then once, once we have that solid and demonstrated success, then maybe we talk a little bit more about what a liaison directly to the governing board would look like. I, I feel like we're leapfrogging a little bit to um, going right to a liaison to the board when really what we're, what what much of this conversation has been about is student voice informing many decisions, many different types of decisions in the school district. Um, and Andy, I would love for you to um, weigh in on that idea since I just.
Helen, this is, this is Pete. If I may just, you know, offer a thought as well. I really appreciate you bringing us back to the portrait of a graduate because that is the foundation that we're creating. Uh, the, the heart and soul of our organization and how we will develop young people to be uh, exactly the conversation, advocates for what they believe, communicators, civic engage, civically engaged. And what comes to mind is that I, I know that we're entering this new year focusing on, on uh, yeah, uh, learning environments and 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 equity for kids. What a great opportunity to get the voice of students about equity and opportunity and justice that will drive our portrait of a graduate. And and so I I concur with you. I I think potentially the starting point is, let's celebrate the student voice. And maybe that will lead us to, what does the liaison maybe look like? But the student voice is the most important thing and how it contributes to our progress, their progress, their opportunity.
What I think at this point, since we're actually over time and we are supposed to be going into a regular session so we can go into our executive session, is I think we plan to, and maybe I'm reaching out to all of you to maybe let me know what you want to do. This clearly is not the end of the discussion and I don't want all of the hard work and efforts to, to lie there. This is an opportunity to keep going. So how would you like to proceed? Would the board members like to have another study session? Would you like to work two on two um, with Helen by um, bringing your ideas to her? Maybe your concerns to her, that she can uh, put them together and bring maybe some suggestions back to the board based on some comments and input from individual board members where we really are given enough time to be able to think this through. That's been the challenge for me. This is a lot of information that I have to absorb and process. And then I'll be able to come to someone and say, here's the, here's the concerns I have, et cetera. And that way, um, Marcy will, you will be able to feel like um, this is not being stalled. This just needs to generate more ideas and input from us who, who have a vested interest in it. Would that be uh, an idea that we could entertain? Your thoughts from any other board members? Does that sound like an idea moving forward?
President Minor, I I think that that, that would be a good idea. I can also, there are, there are over a hundred schools that that do um, student voice, which is a, which is a program, it is a curriculum. And I can provide the other board members with links to that curriculum so you could take a look at, so you could actually see a model. And this is the organization that Jordan works for. They're firmly flexible, but you could see what it looks like in high schools all over the country. And maybe that would be a good place. So I, because you mentioned that you would like to become more educated and understand better. Is this an advocacy group? Is it, is it, is, are we just listening to the voices? Are we asking them for their opinion? And and so, you know, what direction do we want to go in? There is, there is that model. It's more, it's more of an advocacy model. Um, and that's why I mentioned the, the types of students that are already advocates on their campuses might be, might be the type of student that comes together to advocate for their campus as a whole. So um, I'd be happy to provide you with links and and, and I actually, Mrs. Hollins, I can provide them to you. And then, then then maybe you would share them with the rest of the board members. So it would give us maybe some direction as to, as to models or, or just to take a look what, what that, that particular program looks like in, in over a hundred high schools.
Absolutely.
Okay.
My, my recommendation would be, since from what I'm hearing, a lot of, the most important thing is hearing the student's voice. Uh, and then we can kind of work with it from there. And so I think that's going to all fall heavily on Dr. Forless. So my recommendation is, in light of what we've got going on with the coronavirus and the pandemic and the being able to open schools, how does this fit in? I mean, are we even going to have kids on campus? Uh, you know, what, what are we going to be working with? I think that the, my recommendation is, is that we, we ask Dr. Forless then to keep this in mind of how do we hear the student's voice as she's going through this opening the school process? What are, what is feasible? And then from there, then how do we then, you know, bundle it out from her? But I would like to have her significant input on, on this particular, and how this proceeds because of, uh, so much is going to fall under her, is my recommendation.
I think it's important that we are respectful of their time because right now they are being bombarded by all of the challenges of opening a school, um, school district in a very short amount of time when you look at it, just weeks. And so I want to also be respectful of that, knowing that that is our priority right now to make sure we're doing that the way we need to be doing it without losing sight that this is important to us as well. But maybe we can, like you said, Stephen, combine the two, where the voices are included, Andy, in this process to begin with as we know that that's a priority of ours. And I think it has been shown that it's a priority of yours too. But um, not to, again, not to diminish this opportunity that Marcy, you, you feel passionate about, and I respect that so, so much so. Because I think it's a very worthwhile position that you have, that we don't want to lose the momentum on it now. So, so let's have a balance of being respectful of your time and at the same time, not, not losing sight of this, this priority as well. And with that, I am going to go ahead and um, ask for a vote to adjourn the study session so we can go into regular sessions and we can keep moving forward. Do I have a motion for that?
I, I move that we adjourn the study session.
Okay, I hear that motion from Mrs. Richardson. A second, please.
Second, Marcy Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Now for the vote, uh, Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mrs. Richardson?
Aye.
And um, Mrs. Hutchinson, did I say that already?
No, aye.
Oh, thank you. And Mrs. Minor, aye. Thank you, everyone, for that. We now are adjourned at six fifteen and getting ready for our next session.